All right, call to order the planning board meeting for Tuesday, January 13th. Is there anyone here to speak for anything that's not on the agenda? All right, minutes from our December 23rd meeting, did everyone have a chance to look at them?
Make a motion to re-accept December 23rd.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? All right. Moving right along to old business, continuation of the public hearing for the special permit, the stormwater permit for 39 O'Neil Street. We received the request of correspondence from Time Bond. The opinion that the DEP does not need to be involved at this stage in the process. There's no increase, I guess, in the emissions. And we also received some email communication from some neighbors regarding odors. Do you guys have a chance to look at that? What did you look at that? Okay. And a response from Jackie Duda, the health department. Everybody have any comments, questions?
I think Jackie addressed the concern. She suggested it was a piece of applications that may have been causing it to be a temporary issue.
Oh, Christ, David.
My recommendation to the board is that I think we have to make two motions to approve if we were to go in that direction. We shouldn't put two stipulations. One to baffling, and the other to put some plantings up in that beast-shaped area. Conditions as well. I think that because Jackie's saying that it isn't, I think that we need to take the concerns that the citizens bring very carefully. But I think that those two stipulations should go along with the helping in every other way that's deemed compliant.
Any other thoughts? Just looking back at the original special permit, the conditions. A row of arborvitae should be planted as a screen on the east property line to create a buffer in the residential neighborhood along Lovefield Street. A windscreen should be constructed around the exhaust mechanical system on the south side of the building. Transfer of ownership on in special permits only approved for similar use, otherwise no special permit application approved or required. And there should be no outside storage on the site, including containers, pallets, and materials used in the manufacturing processes. Is there somebody here from Al? Based on what we talked about last time, I don't think it sounds like there were any objections to those.
I forget exactly, I was looking at this when you read all that, so if you want to go over it again, Russ probably wants to hear it too.
I understand we have to put a sound attenuation panel up on the south side.
Yeah, these were the conditions that were on the last special permit.
Right.
And the other one was a row of arborvitae or some other kind of plantings.
Right.
As a screen on the east property line to create a buffer from the residential neighborhood on Lovefield Street.
That's not a problem.
That's not a problem.
We're good with that. Our only concern, and we talked about it after the last meeting, is putting arborvitae's in, they're going to take a while to grow up.
Yeah.
And putting some sort of hedge in there that way, that would, over time, would grow to a size that offers more of a buffer over time.
Okay.
The plan is to show those on there.
Right.
Along with there is we're removing the existing vegetation.
Right, okay.
Excuse me, is the intent to leave the tree line that's there intact?
I'm sorry, can you say your name and address for the record, please?
Mary Hicks, 108 Lovefield Street.
To most of the extent, yes, it will be left alone. Where it's being modified for some of the stormwater management, that's where the arborvitae is proposed to replicate that, the existing buffer.
Okay, so it's part of the stormwater treatment plan that you have to take down some of the existing trees and put up some of the new stuff?
And that's shown on that plan pretty clearly where that's going to stay and where it's going to be.
Yeah, okay. Does that answer your question?
Well, not really. I don't know where they're going to be.
The vast majority of the line as it is, off the top, it's probably about 100 feet that's going to be altered.
And where is that?
It's directed to the rear of the facility, the back left corner.
Do you understand the alteration?
The tree's right aside of the bike path.
So I guess I'll point to everybody one shot in the best I can. This is the, the orange is the existing facility. And then this lighter yellow is the new addition we're talking about. Along the back, this existing tree line's going to remain, with the exception of this one small area here that they're going to replicate with new arborvitae's at the back.
So extending the line? Is that across from Clap Street?
I think Clap is further.
Clap is up further.
I don't even have Clap's even on that map, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, makes a big difference whether or not it's further down than Clap Street or, I mean, we live on the corner of Lovefield and Clap. And during the summer, you can't see through that.
Right.
You take it down and put our arborvitae's up. I got arborvitae's in my yard that have been there for 25 years and we're finally getting privacy. And that's feeding them with chemicals every year. I mean, I'll never see a hedge that's going to hide anything if they take that tree line down.
Looking at the map here, I mean, Clap Street is the other direction.
Clap Street's not actually...
This is the property line, Clap Street's down here. Yeah.
Okay.
It's off in there.
Yeah.
Didn't exist.
Yeah, I don't really understand. So the orange is the present building?
Yeah, the orange, and the other orange building on the right is the tape adhesive applications next door.
Oh, okay.
The yellow is the new one.
The yellow is the...
And that's going north from the building?
I'm not sure on the direction on that.
That's going where the parking lot is now?
No, that's going towards the bike path from the back of the existing plant. So the bike path is sort of on an angle. You see Lovefield Street in the upper right there.
Yes.
That's the bike path and then Lovefield Street is next to it. And I think, I don't think Clap is on that. I'm not sure exactly where it is. I know it's further down.
Yeah.
You might have a better sense living there, where it is.
I lived there for 30 something years and I still...
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. Well, it's a funny angle with the building.
So the tree line is going to come down where?
Right here, just this little spot. The rest of it's going to remain as is.
And that area is basically a farm field right now.
Yeah, and that's a farm field. All of this is field right now.
Right.
And there's a small strip of trees that are going to remain as is. And everything that is altered will be replaced with arborvitae's.
Okay, so your addition is going on to the back of the current building?
Correct.
That's going to go past the building inside of it, or behind the building inside of it?
I don't follow, sorry, behind the building inside of it?
There's Chemtech and then the other company they have is what, Stick or something like that?
Adhesive applications is that building over there in the orange, the far right there. That's the stick building you're talking about.
Okay.
And the yellow is the new proposed?
Yeah, I'm just trying to orientate myself to the map.
At the bottom of the page.
Yep.
This is Lovefield Street and the bike path.
Okay.
So it's almost like if you drive around by the front of the plant, if you look right down, straight down the parking lot.
Got you.
The area we're talking about where the arborvitae's are, it comes straight to the back from there.
Okay, okay.
Can you understand?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Are you, in the two stipulations that I just mentioned, that I'd like to see us add as conditions, I'd suggested, and it's great to have that map out, at the end of that V, some additional plantings to help, you know, prevent the fan from blowing out in that V. And also, we talked about last time, the one specific vent that's up there. When I make that motion, I need to be able to refer to that vent, give you some language.
To? Yeah, the one exhaust that was required to be screened, he's looking for what it's called. It was referenced last time as the exhaust mechanical system on the south side of the building. Does that seem to be the one that's...
Since the last meeting, there was mentions of noises and so on like that. We are definitely going to put up sound attenuation system. There are two process fans on that side of the building. There's a fan for cooling tower and there is a fan for air scrubber, okay? So, subsequent to last meeting, somebody stopped by from, I don't know, was your panel or from, somebody from town stopped by the property and they walked the area and they didn't feel that the noise was associated with our process, more or less associated with the neighboring property. Are you...
That would be me.
Am I correct in paraphrasing? I'm sorry, I wasn't in the plant that day.
You're correct. The noise that I was aware of, and I was there prior to the machinery starting up. So as each unit came online, I became aware of where the noise was coming from.
Okay.
And yes, there was a small amount of sound, I wouldn't really call it noise, coming from Chemmetal. There was a hell of an amount of noise coming from the adhesive plant, as well as Love Snow. So I think that is our comfort in both issues.
Good to know. Are you recommending then that the stipulation about putting baffling on that one fan not be added?
That would depend on how much noise is going to be coming from that fan after the addition.
I don't think the addition is going to modify anything.
There's not going to be any changes, there doesn't seem to be any.
That fan, that process will not change at all. We're not adding to production capabilities currently. So everything stays status quo with that fan, albeit it might be relocated. If it gets relocated, then we will definitely put cantilever walls in or whatever it takes. As we stated at the last meeting, we're trying to work with the neighbors. The first addition we went to put in, when we did take the woods down, the wooded property down originally, there was, you know, in the wintertime, people were complaining the wall packs in the back of our plant was putting light over toward Lovefield. We turned the lights off in the back of the plant. Since then, they've stayed off, but, you know, we've turned them off to make the neighbors more comfortable in their situation. Anytime we've been aware of any complaint coming from any neighbor, we address the complaint. We don't want to be a bad neighbor. We're a zoned industrial, but we still want to be a good steward to the neighborhood people. And that's, if anything is concerned, we'll address it. And that's not a problem.
I appreciate it.
I think the baffling is something we'll be doing.
We'll do that, we'll do the planting. Now, we have a limited piece of that property, so we will do to our piece of the property only, okay? Because it's kind of weird shape.
Yeah. Okay, so you're agreeable to doing baffling on the fan and also doing some plantings there in that V to try to mitigate some of the sound as well?
Yes.
Okay. You guys have any other questions or, you know, anybody else here have anything else to say?
With...
Can you just give us your name and address?
Mike Perouse, for Clap Street. With ChemMetal being a sister company to adhesive applications, is there going to be the chance that adhesive applications is going to be putting their material in your warehouse?
No. No. I mean, they're a sister company. Could it happen? Possibly in an emergency situation. Their materials that they store are basically innocuous materials, rolls of foams and so on like that. So it has no bearing on, you know, our process or anything like that.
Do we have to, if there's any kind of emergency situation with what's going to be in that warehouse, do we have to worry about it as far as being in the neighborhood?
In our warehouse?
Yeah, so...
The warehouse will be fully sprinkled. We work closely with the fire department at all times. They're aware of all our fire plans or our action plans. We tour them through our facilities regularly. So they know what's involved there and how to handle any situation we have.
Okay.
And we do have internal people that are trained in handling any emergency situation.
Could I add a couple things? Dave Forowitz from Time Bond on the question regarding the emergency side of the house. The relationship with the fire department is tremendous. Every March 1st, they get a complete inventory of what's in the facility.
Okay.
And on top of that, there's a new process chemistry rule in the state that the facility's already evaluated and brought to you modern to discuss.
Okay.
So from the emergency perspective, the fire department is the first response for that facility. There?
There.
And I, just to state, I did look at ChemMetal on the EPA site and it looked like you guys were cleaning as far as violations and inspections and all that stuff.
I'm sorry, what was that? I couldn't hear.
On the EPA, the government EPA site, you can search, and I put that in my email, and it will give you the history of violations, what chemicals they have, and that type of item. So it allows me, a neighbor, to see what's going on and if I have concerns.
You saw that in your email, it was very thorough. Thank you.
Thanks. So from the ChemMetal side, my concerns are pretty much a lot less than the other stuff I stated, which is very concerning, so...
And to offer you more, you did a very good thorough job of review. What's called EPRA, the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act, requires that facilities like ChemMetal divulge what's in those, and that's what you were looking at.
Okay.
I want to stress that they just list the materials. They don't really list the concentrations of those materials. As we talked about last month, the facility maintains a relatively small permit to emit through the Department of Environmental Protection, which limits the use of those materials.
Okay. And that, you know, I'm just learning this stuff, those are concerns.
John Hicks, 108 Lovefield. I'd like to know, as far as the materials, the solvents they're using, how much of that is on-site at any one time? I mean, I went to the EPA site myself and found out what they're using for chemicals. And then I looked, the MS has the D sheets on them. I have copies of them here. There is nothing there that is something you can buy at the hardware store. Very volatile, very flammable, and being airborne is very bad to your health. I mean, I ran a body shop at a Chevy dealership. There is nothing in that building that's good. And I'd like to present you with these MSD sheets so you could look at them.
Well, to be fair, if you're not looking at our particular product, I read your letter too, very thorough. I think what's happening is you're kind of mixing us in with adhesive applications. The chemicals used in our plant is we use a solvent blend, we use a small amount of acetone, and we use isopropyl alcohol. That's it for our plant. We don't have the heavy chemicals in our facility. Okay, as far as the storage goes, we store five-gallon cans of it within our facility at any time when we need to use them for point of use. And there are one to maybe two drums stored in a chemical locker that is designed for those chemicals, that if a drum were to rupture, it has full containment for up to 40 drums in there. That room is fully vented, so on like that, if there were an emergency. So it's not willy-nilly, you store anything.
So at any one time, you probably only have a half a dozen five-gallon barrels of whatever you're using and it's in a containment, it's well over 110% of its volume?
I don't understand that part of the 110%.
Yeah, the 110% is good engineering practice for storage, great point. All of the material at ChemMetal's stored inside, the vast majority is in five-gallon pails. There are a few 55-gallon drums, but very limited.
Right.
And no stationary bulk storage whatsoever.
And they're in the containment at 110%?
Inside the building contained.
Right. I worked for the school and anything we had to do had to hold 110% of it.
Got it.
Anything else?
Do you have any other questions?
My name's Albert Park, 110 Lovefield Street. So part of what I'm hearing is that ChemMetal, you guys have been sort of working along very well and I'm pleased with that. But then the other message I'm getting is that we're getting confused, that with adhesive applications and your needs to, you know, for permitting and whatever. I live at 110 Lovefield, we have this smell that's intermittent, there's noise that's going. I walk my dogs at 11 o'clock at night, there's still noise going on over there, which is not that bad during the winter. During the summer, when my windows are open, that's going to bother me. What do we do?
Well, I mean, the health agent is investigating that and has been doing that for some time. I mean, there may be other options for who you can report that to or how you can proceed with that, but it's not really, especially if it's adhesive applications and not this facility, it's not really within our jurisdiction for this special permit.
Understood.
And it's, right, and especially one of the things here too is there's an expansion in size, but what we discussed at the last hearing is that there's not really an expansion in operation, that the use is basically the same. So there's not really going to be a change. What's happening there today is going to basically be the same thing that's happening there if we were to approve this special permit next year or whenever they're done with it.
Right.
So it's just more, essentially, it's more storage space from the sound of what they've said to store some of their product and their unfinished product.
If I can add, Jesse, what you said is absolutely germane. We're dealing specifically with that expansion, but I do want you to leave with your fears as well, and everyone else here. So if you'll allow me, I'll just read a sense of what Jackie Duda actually said, and we're very listening. She said adhesive applications recently underwent a changeover in some of their equipment. Specifically, they're installing a new thermal oxidizer in the past few weeks. While they have tweaked the oxidizer, some odors may have been released, and I believe that is what the neighbors have experienced. I am in the midst of investigating this complaint at this time. It is my understanding that the manufacturer, the oxidizer, has completed the changeover to the satisfaction of industry standards, and I do not expect further odor complaints. Nevertheless, I'm going to visit adhesive applications this week to get to know their presence better. Jackie.
Okay, so that's the smell.
That's the health agent.
Oh, right. But that's the odors that we're completely concerned with.
Yep.
On the other hand, is the noise.
You went?
As I said, in both instances, all of the noise that would have been objectionable, all of the smell was coming from adhesives.
Right.
There was nothing, there was some sound emitting from ChemMetal, but it was very low-grade. And as I said, I was on the property as each one of their machines, fans, whatever they were, came online.
Right.
The only one that was running before I got there was the one where it treats your water so that it can be returned without being contaminated. That one was running before I got there, but it was very, very minimal sound. On the other hand, the fans from the adhesives plant were running well before I got there. So there was noise there, but it wasn't coming from ChemMetal, because I was standing on ChemMetal's property as each of the other three fans came up online and they added only a negligible amount of noise to the process. Majority of what was happening was coming from the adhesive plant. So I think there's the culprit, and we probably need to stay on top of it, so the health department to make sure that whatever is coming out of them, by the way, smell is not a contaminant of some sort that's a risk to the environment as well as the people that live there.
Okay, so Jackie Duda is your... Okay.
You know, if Jackie Duda is willing, I would love to accompany her under her side to see what's going on.
It sounds as though the question, though, is aside from the odor problem, is there something that the planning board is able to do about this other facility with the noise complaints from their fans, given that there isn't a special permit application from them before us right now?
Right. And the answer to that is that there isn't. That's not before us right now, so we can't really, we can't put conditions on a company that's not the applicant, that's not before us, not related to us.
So from that side of things, if there's a noise complaint, who do you go to to rectify that?
The health agent.
The health agent is still the person?
Jackie.
Jackie Duda. We do not have a noise ordinance in the city, so noise complaints go to Jackie.
Okay.
You ready?
One other question.
Yeah.
This new addition, they're saying they're talking about having a spray booth and also having a dust collection system. What is the spray booth going to be used for? Is that going to be used with any of the chemicals or paints that are hazardous or anything?
That spray booth is currently in use, has been in use for the last 17 years that the facility has been there. There is no new booth going in. And that booth is what it is.
Okay.
And we use it to put coatings on our metals that we finish.
Okay, that would be like acid-based chemicals?
No, the coatings are either urethane-based or UV-based.
Okay. And that has the proper stacks and everything on it for...
That's the same booth that's been permitted and in operation for 17 years. And our environmental engineer can answer more technical questions if you'd like.
The board actually requested last month that we provide a determination relative to the air emissions from the facility. And the facility is already permitted. No additional operations are being installed as part of this expansion.
Okay. Now, how often is that checked and tested, the system for the spray booth?
Their operators, literally, on a daily basis. Because you've probably been there, it's got a manometer on the side, you've got a spray, you've been down that road. It's got filter fabrics, they do all the right things.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions? Anything else? So the only other issue too is that under the ordinance, I think it calls for a performance guarantee for conditions like this, which I think we can waive too, so I don't know how to work things about that.
I agree.
You agree?
To waive.
To waive this?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think the applicant has been willing and agreeable to all the conditions. So...
I'm a big shit.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Jess, any comments or... Make a motion.
I'm going to start with the stormwater, if that's okay with you.
That's good.
My motion to approve the stormwater plan, if I say it correctly, stormwater plan permit for ChemMetal's addition.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? All right.
My motion to approve the special permit to construct a 20,000-square-foot addition for manufacturing uses for ChemMetal with following two stipulations.
Whoa, you said 20,000.
Not 20,000, sorry. I had it on the original that I was reading off, but what is it now?
35, five.
35, yeah.
Is that right?
No, it's 32, 32 in the warehouse and five of our office.
Min that to 32.
And five for potential office space for future expansion.
So we're talking 37?
37. That's how it's drawn on the original drawing.
My motion to approve the special permit for ChemMetal to construct a 37,000-square-foot addition for manufacturing uses with following two stipulations. One, that they put baffling on their south-facing fan, and two, they put additional plantings in the V area to help reduce noise issues.
Should we keep the other stipulations in?
I think that's a good idea, and maintaining the previous stipulations. Do you need me to list those out, Jess?
No, I have it, thank you.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? All right. Chat second, if you're looking for...
I'm just counting and checking and... That's why there's two of us taking them.
All right, I guess that's it for ChemMetal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time Bond.
Next up is...
Come on in, there's plenty of here.
Yeah, yeah, plenty of seats in here now, folks.
Hey, you go in the front row, you can hear.
All right, next up is a special permit application for Norwood Properties at 48 Parsons Street. Someone can speak to that.
I work for the architect.
Okay. You went, come on down. Look here.
The owner's not here?
Ziggy's not here.
Ziggy's not here, will you be honest?
Ziggy's not here.
I'm supposed to take questions.
All right, that's okay, we can look through the application.
Okay.
Or you can continue it if you like.
Would you rather continue it till the owner's here?
Might be.
Okay.
I don't have any particular questions, just see if they're like earlier.
Well, it might make sense though.
I can give a brief overview if you'd like, but...
Sure.
Come on up, okay.
We'll shut the door down here.
Shut the door?
Yeah.
Would you please mind swinging it?
Sure.
You can just have a seat, Tom, just stand with us, we'll be all right.
They don't bite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most of us.
Less ass.
All right, yeah, if you can give us a brief overview.
Okay. Well, the property I'm consulting is Parsons Street East Street School. It's two levels plus an attic and basement. We're thinking of turning it into not a formal housing, a residential with, hoping for seventeen units, not sure if we're going to get quite up that many. Four in basement, five in the first, five in the second, three in the top. It's a one-acre lot. That half of it's not being included. I know we're looking frequently at the possibility of the city turning the back portion back acre into a green garden, so we're trying to leave that somewhat open. We'll be parking in the back.
What is the number of parking spots?
There should be thirty for tenants, two for, for handicapped, and seven for visitors. There's nine.
Minimums that had to be met.
It needs the minimums.
That you mean?
Yeah.
So that there was a sign that was going to go up front. Not a lot of information there, but I think they said it was just going to follow the sign ordinance essentially. What's it?
Probably Parsons Place, possibly the address.
And just for the record, we did receive comments from some other boards. The Conservation Commission had no comments. Fire Department had no comments. Building Inspector commented just they had no issues with the project, but that they've done good work, for example, in the button building. And the Health Department commented, just to make sure we're request that we include a requirement that they comply with the building code standards for...
Health code?
Yeah, with the, yeah, public health regulations in addition to those. So that's their comments on that issue.
I don't think we're to add anything to that anymore.
Yeah, I mean, they're required to comply with them. You guys have any comments or questions? Anybody else here have any comments or questions about this?
Rick Hamlin, nine federal. My property, Amy's property, we're looking right at the school. And I've been there forty-eight years, almost fifty. Are you going to put up some kind of fencing, soundproof, so we don't hear it? Because we both got dogs, and they were there first. And I don't want them barking back and forth. It's bad enough now, they're working on the weekend, and they're slamming stuff in the, you know, I know they're clean as hell.
So you mean just for during construction?
Nope. A permanent privacy fence?
A permanent. Because I don't want to look at them, they don't want to look at us once they're in there, you know? All the people that are going to be moving in there.
I saw a note that it was existing fence for a name, but I cannot...
It's just a chain link right now.
It's just a chain link.
And we want something private.
That would be interesting for you to do, but also beneficial to the look that chain linked, that when I saw it there too, doesn't really have a...
I mean, that fence has been up there for a lot of years, you know?
This is out in front, right on Parsons Street?
No.
No, on Federal.
Oh, on Federal.
The street, yeah. Along the side of it. It's basically our two houses that are looking at the school.
Right next door?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I probably don't have authority to do that, so...
I'm sorry, I don't, but I can certainly put in the word.
If you're going to continue this to the next meeting, are you going to allow public speak at the next meeting?
Yeah, if the hearing continues, it's just a regular public hearing again.
Can I say something? Are we still on public speak?
Yeah.
I'm just completely and utterly confused as to why we're sitting in this room looking at this permit right now. I've been talking about New City, all of us have been for years. Our neighborhood has undergone drastic changes. We went through all of these meetings with the property subcommittee to tell the city what we wanted. We want services. We don't need any more housing on Parsons Street. And I think we're really lacking a future vision for this neighborhood. And this is a very pivotal moment. We just added thirty-eight units in my backyard, ten feet off of my property line. When they started excavating, my walls started cracking. I hired an engineer who basically took my money and did nothing for me, so I had to fix my walls myself. They refused to put a privacy fence in my backyard, but they're building a $20 million project now in North Hampton. We don't know how those thirty-eight units are going to affect the traffic, the schools, the neighborhood in general. There's four more units down the street that are not complete yet. A lot of us rely on rentals to pay our mortgages. I'm an owner occupied. The last tenants I had called the health inspector when I wanted to increase rent, and Jackie Duda came in and gave me a lovely list of things I needed to correct if I wanted to rent again. There's no oversight for what's happening with the development right now. I understand it's private property and developers can do what they want, but it's impacting my quality of life, my daughter's quality of life, my neighbor's quality of life. And I really wish you would just slow the boat down right now and deny this permit and give us time to see how these new neighbors are going to integrate and what we're going to need. That intersection at the end of Parsons and Ferry is deadly. We almost got hit the other day. A kid got hit on a bike a couple months ago. We can't just keep shoving people into that neighborhood with nothing to offer other than a bunch of cramped housing. I'm really happy that the building's not getting torn down. I'm really happy that we have this possibility for the public garden space. We need that. But there's been multiple reports, the open space report, there was a cultural heritage survey. This is an important neighborhood with people appreciate that school and that building, but we're also, we have three times the poverty level in that precinct, in that neighborhood. We need things. We are basically economically segregated at this point, ecologically segregated at this point. We need services. And there was a lot of work done to bring the neighborhood business zoning and drive it over that building to allow for that. And I'm very confused as to why we're even sitting in this room. $10,000 for a property that's well worth over a million when it's done.
So...
Doesn't make any sense to me.
A lot of what you're raising are issues that are way beyond what we can do with the plan or what is at front of us.
Well, what I'm asking you is to say no to this permit. We don't need housing over there, and it's going to cause issues. What's the backup plan if he doesn't get the permit?
I don't know.
Let's talk about the subsidized housing inventory, right? The reason that the Valley CDC came in when they got denied was because we weren't at our 10%. So they were able to come in under a 40B. As of December of 2014, we're at 5.9%. I'm going to guess that includes all the new additions.
Doesn't.
Because as soon as you have a comprehensive permit, you can start, so we're still under 10%. So if you say no to the special permit, is he going to turn around and change it into a 40B and make it affordable housing?
He's not a, the Valley CDC could do that within the two-year timeframe because they were...
He could do, a private developer can do a...
Not, he has only two years. So if they deny it...
The city could have said no to the CDC, because you can say no within 12 months, but they were afraid of these.
All right, that's all, that's all done, right? Yeah.
The point is, this specific property should not be housing. I think that every effort should be made to find somebody, I just don't understand why, one, it was a one-month window to vet and find an appropriate buyer for this property.
Well, again, that's all in the past, and that's not, I mean, we don't have jurisdiction or anything about that anyway.
So now you have to say no.
Well, now we have a private property owner here who wants to build...
So you say no, and you say find something else.
But we went to the meetings, and they wanted to sell it for a half a million dollars. We could have pooled our money together and bought it for $10,000.
I'm sure we have a finite list of criteria by which...
You had off-the-map that wanted to go in there and open up little shops.
They didn't bid on it. I don't know what to tell you. We had, we had just...
No, I understand, I hear you.
We advertised the property, we had several developers go to the pre-bid meeting and looked at it and determined it was not financially viable for them to rehab the existing building. And if we had given up the back lot and didn't preserve it for open space and allowed the building to get demoed, they would have jumped on it.
But we need some other than housing there. I mean, at one time, there were three supermarkets on Parsons Street. We got nothing. We got no little mom-and-pop place, we got nothing. And I've been living here all my life. We got nothing in New City. We have nothing there, nothing.
And you came out.
It's going to be turned into housing.
Definitely hear strong feelings in there. I mentioned one thing that you brought up was about traffic.
Yes.
And I'm curious if traffic was ever looked at.
There was a very questionable traffic.
I want to direct that to you, and I know you might not, we might need to extend to get, you know, to get a different report, because I don't know if you, someone else is supposed to represent, but have you looked at traffic flow at all?
No.
Hearing that's a good answer.
No, I've been trying to dress service, we don't have any stores down, or anything else. I've been at this town my whole life.
Do you remember New City?
You had Stax, you had Trico's down there, you had...
John's Fine Food.
Idris Sanger down there.
Yeah.
Harris Cafe, you had Mount View Cafe, you had a pharmacy on the corner. Why do you think they all moved out of there?
You tell me.
Because it wasn't profitable. If somebody had, if somebody could put a business down here on Park Street...
That was the freaking sixties and seventies.
And make it a variety store, do you think somebody would go in there and build one?
That's the...
Nobody cares, if you don't live in that sixties and hell, I wouldn't care either. I don't care about the planes, right? You don't care about New City.
Chances are, the more housing you get in there, the better chance you will have in something.
And they're going to be good people too, right?
There's no good property. Can I just also point out that that entire street is zoned neighborhood business, and every development you put in takes away another opportunity for neighborhood business. You let them put in a whole block...
What do you want the city to do?
I want the city to deny this permit.
They already sold the property for 10 grand or whatever it was.
Which is a travesty and a complete, I'm sorry, but public trust is blown on that one. I think if I could hire, I can barely afford my mortgage after this Valley CDC nonsense in my backyard. If I could hire an attorney, I'm pretty sure that the due diligence was not done on that deal. I'm livid, and I'm trying to remain calm and polite to you all, but you have changed the way my life existence is right now. And all I'm asking is just give me something, give me something. I can't sell my house. People say, oh, it looks great, it looks beautiful, but what the hell is that in your backyard? I'm stuck where I am, and you just keep piling it on. There used to be trees. There was a very lengthy discussion about 100 feet of Arboretty. They took down two acres of trees. I get nothing, no privacy fence, no nothing.
I understand, and I really do.
This is not acceptable.
But that project is not before us.
Okay, but this project then is. You need to take into consideration the whole scope.
But so it's a totally different process. So this is just a special permit. It's a private property owner that now owns that property, and this is what they have chosen to do with it. So we have ways to sort of try to control the project and shape it if we can, depending on what sort of legitimate concerns from the criteria for a special permit. But we can't just say, this isn't the kind of thing we want in our town, and we're not rejecting it.
There's too much density.
We don't, we don't have the authority to do that even if we wanted to. That's beyond our authority in this situation.
I just wanted to be on that one. I disagree with you on that one.
That is totally true. There are lists of issues here for a special permit to be granted.
12.75.
And it's not, it's not something that we can do just on a whim like that without legitimate...
Can I ask, why is there an elevator going in and there's only one ADA compliant unit in there? I mean, things like that.
He has to put an elevator in in order to meet the building code requirements. You have to. If somebody was visiting somebody, even though it's not an ADA compliant, somebody was handicapped and needed that elevator, that has to be there.
So how about...
It's required under the building code for them to have accessibility in a multi-story building when you're doing the rehab.
Can we do something that will actually help our community? Can we make more ADA compliant? Can we provide housing for people who need housing? How about elderly? How about people who need handicap accessibility? How about...
These are all legitimate concerns, they're just at a much bigger scale than what we have in front of us.
But you can put restrictions on the special permit, because it's a special permit. You have a lot of power.
There are restrictions in some senses, and there are concessions we can get in certain situations, but it's not a matter of denying the project because we wish that there was something else that was going in there.
I just think, I don't even know what to say anymore. I don't even know why we show up at these meetings. I don't know why we did all the property subcommittee meeting nonsense.
It's a waste of time.
There's got to be something and...
I understand your frustration, but I, you know, this does have value. Jesse, I'd like to ask that we consider extending this to next meeting, and wonder if you might be able to bring some more information back about traffic.
Well, I could certainly look into it, thank you.
If that's...
How does the rest of the board feel about continuing this?
My feeling is we have rules and regulations we go through on a special permit. We do have some leeway, but if the rest of the board feels that, well, you can do a traffic study, which will help.
I mean, the owner's not even here. Did you see the people?
Well, we're looking at extending it, so I mean, they'll get another opportunity if everyone agrees.
But I just want to say, this is for me, as somebody who has ownership in my neighborhood, who tries to participate and build community, this guy just scooped this building up from the city and can't even show up for the applica, I mean, what? No, really.
But it's not like he just scooped the building up. I don't think that's a fair way to characterize someone that was a public option through a lengthy process.
I disagree, but what kind of ownership is he taking in the community? What is he contributing? He's not even here. That, for me, that's an indication.
You throw the donut.
All right. I mean, how do we feel about continuing?
I have no intentions of continuing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be great if the property owner could be here for the next meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I motion to continue this to our next meeting.
Second?
Okay, wait a minute, you need to say the date and the time. Which year, sorry.
Two weeks hence. You got it, Jess?
I think it's January 27, but it's on the calendar they have for it.
Yeah.
At September 11.
No, I, we asked him this person to go back.
We're just...
I tried to have any property owner come in, but we already sent to this young lady to have a traffic study.
No, we didn't ask for a traffic study. We're curious about what kind of investigation into traffic there's been, and we have other questions that we might like to ask, so we're continuing the hearing. There's no, there's no order or request or anything for specific actions to be taken between now and then.
And for the record, the owner isn't required to shape it anymore.
Give the offer notice.
I agree, but they're not required, just so we know.
Okay, so we have a motion, and it was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, okay. We'll be back in two weeks.
Is a copy of the permit up on the website?
It's not, but I can, I can email you a copy of it, like one, I probably need it now, though.
You're done. Thank you very much.
About that.
I'm sure it was started actually with fire. One more item here. Hey, Jess, hold on. The last item we have on the agenda is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding building size.
Petitioners are around, I've seen them, but they're not.
Not physically here?
Sure.
Okay.
They're upstairs. We'll keep them down.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm here to speak on that issue with permission from the board, and I know that they're on their way down to speak, and I'm wondering if I could say a few words in support of this.
For the record, my name is Tom Murphy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Murphy McCubrey. We have offices in Chicopee and One Monarch Place in Shrinkville. And I've represented over the past twenty years a number of developers, including CVS, Walgreens, Hattell Roberts, Pride, and most recently, Cumberland Farms. And my clients have recently put some property under contract that's on the corner of North Hampton and Florence Rose. And after the property was put under contract, the site was assembled three different parcels, and the assembly came to 2.27 acres. Immediately determined and found out that the minimum building lot in a highway business district in your community is five acres. I had met with the planning department director before. I had met with the planning department director before. When we determined that, we realized that the site probably is not conducive to a favorable ruling from the zoning appeals. And my client, who's Cumberland Farms, who, we recently put one in Westfield over near what is called the Purple Onion. It's a new facility. I happen to think it's a very attractive facility and quite an amenity to the community. But as soon as we determined that there was a five acre minimum building lot, obviously the challenge would be, in my opinion, too much to overcome. I subsequently found out from planning that, that there was this amendment that had been filed. And I thought that I could come here today and just give my opinion that in the twenty-five or so different projects that I have been successful in integrating to communities, not one of those would have ever met the standard of five acre mill building lot. Typically it's an acre, maybe it's two acres. I understand that there's been a proposal submitted that would reduce the requirement from five to three acres. I'm here to ask on behalf of my client and myself that if in fact this board considers a reduction of the five acre minimum to, to a lesser amount, I'm pleading the case that I would ask you to consider two acres, which I believe you'll find in most communities is far in excess of what is currently in existence. I also think that when you require a five acre minimum building lot, it has a negative impact on smaller business. I heard just this evening from this young lady telling us that there's no business in her community. And I don't know what the zoning minimum would be in that particular zone, I don't report to. But I know that my client and every one of my clients would have walked away from this community because of this obstacle which we believe is far in excess of what is necessary. So I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration if, if in fact this board and subsequent boards, ordinance committee of the full board considers a reduction in that amount, I would simply ask you to consider even a lesser amount than the three acres. Two acres obviously is pretty self-serving, but in my opinion it's probably twice the minimum size that I've seen in all other communities. So thank you for your time. I just wanna give you my, my two cents and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a card? Anybody else have any comments on this or wanna talk about how it came to be proposed? David, were you involved in that?
Sure. I was, but point of order, is this a public hearing?
It's a, it's not a public hearing. This is just a, it's basically for us to call a joint meeting with the ordinance subcommittee.
Okay. I'm just, I'm sorry for the tone, I'm just trying to get the lay of the land on this.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's at least two other later venues where there will be public hearing and, and all of that.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't wanna get into too much detail about all of this at this point, because I think that we've read the proposal and, I mean, frankly, I don't know that, that whether or not we have a meeting with the ordinance subcommittee as much. I don't think we have a whole lot of discretion anyways, but it's certainly not the time to make a decision on the merits of the ordinance right now anyways. But, but Dave, do you wanna give a little bit of background on this then?
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to.
Dan, do you wanna join?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, for me, this came out of just being, becoming familiarized in myself with the master plan. And of course, when I was on the planning board, one of the things that we took up was formation of the master plan implementation committee. That's when I read the master plan more in detail than I had before. And it was pointed out at that time that it had been nearly four years since the master plan had been completed, but there had been no implementation committee put together for it. And it seemed like nothing was moving forward to see that the elements of that plan, any of it was out. Some of it does seem to be in this. So, so I took this on myself going through there and I, you know, reading the master plan and results of surveys and such and found that, it seemed to me anyway, from reading the results of surveys, and that most people in East Hampton, the people that responded to unsurveyed, which is substantial input in the community, it was, you know, thousands of households and a large percentage of population in these surveys that went out, turned back, I think it was in a sense forty percent. It seemed to indicate that somebody, that big box development was undesirable and for all the right reasons, that it would, large retail venues, for instance, would perhaps draw too much business from downtown, which we've taken a lot of time to develop and, and work on, keeping, you know, the storefronts and on Union Street and College Street filled. And that there was no, it wasn't really necessary to have, you know, if a big box goes in, it would be something that would cater to not just East Hampton, we're a seventeen thousand population. This would be something that would be designed to attract business from neighboring communities. So for me, I mention that because from an environmental point of view, having people, creating an enticement for people to travel distances to buy something is not a desirable thing. But mostly it came down to simply other factors, I believe, that perhaps development in East Hampton has been kind of signed, you know, smaller developments, because as long as the doors open for a large commercial, a large retailer to move into an area, I know I for one would, if I were in a position to start a store that sold clothing, I would be hesitant to do that if I knew that at any time something like a, you know, a big box store that could, you know, by design. And stores, big box stores are that, they use the large model, the, the, you know, thousands of, of square feet of space. It's necessary for them to have that larger space in order to have the prices that they offer. And just the evidence shows again and again, you go through this tree about any communities across the country, in fact, across the world, where big boxes move in, the immediately following and wake of that is the decline of local retailers, downtown strip. So this is really, and I think that in the master plan, that's really what people were speaking to, that and also scale of development, you know, what is, what is in character for East Hampton? What, what do we wanna see here? What do we wanna create as town? What do we wanna maintain? What is our future like? What will be? How will it change if the door is just left open for sort of development? The largest buildings we have in town right now, I mean, I've been here for twenty-two years, the door's been wide open for big box development. It hasn't happened yet. I don't know when it would ever happen, it is not happening now. Walmart is already at a place, for instance, where they're offering smaller stores that are forty-five thousand square feet. So this, this proposal would not preempt in any way, any retailers that would come in that already provide these items that, they're actually reacting to communities that have put forth the same sorts of, you know, proposals and actually passing these ordinance. There are, there are many cities across the United States that have done this. So it's not closing the door to any competition, it's just closing the door to unfair competition.
Okay. And bearing in mind that I don't think we really need to get deeper into the merits of this at this point, because there aren't any public hearing, at least one down the road. Is there anybody else that has something to add briefly that wants to say it tonight?
Yeah, I would like to have you invite to the public hearing, the industrial and economic committee. Their, their job is to bring business and growth into town. And I think it would be wonderful if they could come in and we could get their impact in person, as opposed to a letter that they would write in. Mr. Gardner was on that committee, so he will tell us how valuable that committee is to the town in supporting business coming in and growth coming in.
Well, all our hearings are public hearings and I think that that's a valuable perspective for people that are invested in that.
If they're not invited, if more than three people come, they can't do that. So you have to invite them to have them here. If you don't invite them, they can't come, because it's, would be considered a meeting or something that's not advertised. So you would have to invite them and I think it would be a good idea to invite them, because I found them to be very nice people and very pro-growth in town. That's their job.
I don't, no, yeah, Dan.
I'm not gonna argue or, or talk the merits of big box one way or another, I'm just gonna ask the planning board as they go through their process to please look a little bit closer at the master plan and not let it be cherry picked. I was the chairperson of the master plan, Jessica basically wrote it. And, and, and I'm not gonna talk about the merits or demerits of big boxes, but some of this is a ruse and I'd like the guys to use your heads to, to figure that out.
Okay.
I'd just like to say on, on the retail issue that East Hampton has right now is not per se the big box store. When I came into East Hampton forty-some odd years ago, we had clothing stores, we had shoe stores, and they left the way of the manufacturers. As the manufacturers left, the stores left. Now what we're getting is, we're getting more artisans type businesses coming in and that. Now to bring in a retail base, which I would call clothing, shoes, things like that, may have to resort to not a big box store, but a store that will handle those items and bring them in. And it may be a thirty thousand square foot store, it may need a forty thousand square foot store to bring those items back into East Hampton. Apparently, East Hampton doesn't have the flow of business coming into it that will bring in a retail type business into here, into East Hampton. And that's what has to be worked on in some areas. But you can't really blame what's going on, it's just the, as the businesses, the manufacturers left, the businesses left. And there's no way to get around that other than try and draw them back in. And how we're gonna do it is another problem.
How are we gonna shoot? Bill Cannon, twenty-six, Ashford Circle. This process, it, you're going through this process right now so that you can garner some input from the public, so that you can send on a recommendation to these, the ordinance subcommittee, is that correct?
We're not even to that point. This is literally to decide to hold a joint public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee to start discussing the merits of it. I know there are a lot of people here who came tonight and wanted to talk about it, so I'm trying to let some people feel the need to talk tonight, have their opportunity, but-
Okay.
The merits of this are not really at issue at this point.
Okay. I, I think it would be a terrific idea if the planning board would hold a public hearing on it to, to garner some support.
That is the next step, is a public hearing with the, the city council ordinance subcommittee.
Okay.
That would be the next process.
Please see the fourth February twenty- The, I, I read the proposal and I also read the letter from Jessica regarding her overview of the proposal and everything else. Now I would like the planning board to really take into consideration some of her, her observations and all, 'cause I think they're very, very important to the town and the city character here. And it seems to me that, from what I've been able to read, that the zoning proposal as it's written is a little bit kind of all encompassing and pretty generic. And that there should be a process here where we, we could tailor this to meet the specific needs of this community. Citing other communities in Texas and Hawaii that have kind of gone on to, you know, what I call some corporate bias and, you know, we can kind of get into that whole issue about Walmarts and everything else. I don't think that that's what our process should be about. It should be about what is best for this community and what's best for preserving, especially some of the bigger mill buildings that we got that are still in a very tenuous situation. And I, I think the regulations have to kind of be tempered perhaps to, to recognize that and we shouldn't, we should really look at, look at it carefully to, to not restrict ourselves and, and that we, we may regret. Jessica Allen's overview from the planning department was very well done and I, I really recommend everybody here to kind of read it and think it through a little bit. She has a lot of valuable input and things to say. So that might be something that the planning board could look at in relationship to the zoning proposal.
I'm sorry, I just, just wanna echo that, I guess what Bill said and I said earlier, just to look into it. I don't wanna talk about big boxes, but this isn't a big box ordinance. It prohibits buildings fifty thousand square feet or more. So ten, ten, five thousand square foot stores in a fifty thousand square foot building won't be able to go. And also, and this is where, this is where I'll, I'll lift the cards and I'll tell you this is what I'm really worried about. As written right now, it would prevent a school being larger than fifty thousand square feet being built in town. And I don't think, I think things gotta be thought through. I mean, if you wanna go pick on Wally World, I don't care, but not fight Wally World, not the education and small businesses.
Yeah. The way that's written, we have a fifty-three thousand square foot store that's been approved and we have thirty-three acres. Fifty-three thousand square foot store goes on about five acres. What do we do with the rest?
All valid-
Strawberries?
All valid things to bring up to the public.
Another thing to consider too is if you wanted, hopefully we're trying to have enough shopping, enough variety in the town to have people shop in town instead of shop out of town. And what's happening now, I can speak to the grocery stores, I know a little bit more about that. But if there's ten thousand people in town that shop for groceries, probably fifteen hundred shop at Big E's. The other eighty-five hundred shop out of town. And that's, they spend money out of town, they buy gas out of town. I happen to think Cumberland Farms is a good project. It's not zoned for that in town, but it's a good project. They do a good job, they push gas down twenty cents a gallon, they've got great coffee for a buck, you know, free coffee on Friday, how can you beat that?
You're gonna get a free coffee tomorrow.
There you go. So there's something, I'm sorry, go ahead, you wanna have the meeting?
No, no, I, I mean, I, like I said, with the substance of this, we're all gonna deal with further down the road, so I, I mean, I don't, Dave, can you just quick-
No, I just wanted to say, this is, this is meant to be a proposal. This is a proposal. Proposals are meant to be discussed. And, you know, I welcome a good discussion on it. I, I just felt like it was avoided for long enough and it was time to bring it to the forefront, so it could enter public discussion, so all of these things can be explored, because I've heard a lot of good points here as well. The school, right? That's great, you know? Obviously, this wasn't meant to reduce the size of a school building. So this, this is great. This is, this is what it's meant to do. This is a proposal.
All right.
Well, that being said, the proposal and the zoning amendment though, the zoning amendment is a very neural process, it's not, it's not free flowing.
It is free flowing. We can, we can tweak the language and work on the language through the process.
On your recommendation, but not to the city council, they have to vote on the-
Right, but the next part of the process is the, is the public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee that can go on as long as we need to get language that we all agree with. Or decide we can and don't.
I just wanna note about room size for future meetings, because I think that this is gonna have a high capacity in terms of people in attendance. I tried to get a bigger room for tonight, but we conflicted with the school board on our meeting nights. So we might wanna think about holding it on an off planning board night, just so that we can secure a room that would be able to hold the appropriate capacity, the upstairs chambers and stuff.
Yeah. And just one, one of the, Dave, I, I think it's good that he's kind of bringing it to the forefront here, so that we can have a, a healthy discussion about it. And I took it as, as a point at which we can kind of start a discussion and, you know, you know, work on some language that I'm sure that the, the planning department will, will help with and that there'll be some- that there'll be some considerable review and a thought process going on with the public about it.
I think we can maintain this tone throughout the whole process. We should come out with something pretty good. We have to get this by February 20th. Do you want to do this next meeting?
Well, I just said that we're going to have a conflict. I can't do it the next meeting because there's legal notice requirements that require at least a 14-day notification, which would have been that had to be in the paper today. So the earliest that I can schedule a public hearing, the planning board schedules February 20th. However, we're going to have a room conflict. So I can either investigate what days may be open and what days would be amenable to the ordinance subcommittee, and then just let you know what they have to make it for.
Yeah. We don't need a motion for anything specific right now anyway, right? We're just administratively determining that. You want a motion that we're going to do it?
Yeah, you know, a motion to a public hearing to be scheduled, and we can just say before February 20th, and I can email you and let you know what...
But doesn't the first one have to be joint?
Yeah.
So we have to coordinate.
That's what we have to coordinate with that.
Which is why I said, I motion to have a public hearing with the ordinance.
Can I just...just to point to clarify, Jessica, I mean, all of a sudden, you're worried about time constraints and everything else, and I hate to have a process like that, like this, that's very, very important to the city, to be kind of jammed in a little shoebox.
Well, no, no. I have to schedule a public hearing before February 20th. I have to by state law.
Yeah.
So it has to be scheduled. It doesn't mean that it has to be wrapped up by then.
Here's pressing. There's two other zoning events. We're open and closed within five minutes, just to get the administrative criteria, so that you can have discussions at the appropriate times.
Yeah, well, I just want to get back to the other committee issue. I don't think if they're just here participating and they're not deliberating that that's an issue with Quorum.
Right. Jessica, could several people from the industrial and economic committee come to a meeting? I thought they couldn't because there wasn't...
We're going...it's like I'm having a bad flashback right now. And it wasn't even here when it all happened. I'll investigate it and look into it, but we'll look into it.
But it would be good to have them here. I think they'll give another idea.
Considering they're representing themselves as their own entity and not...
Can't do it. I was told before that you couldn't have more than two people.
No, we'll look into it. We'll look into it.
Okay.
All right.
Wait, I have some input. My name is Eddie Theodore, and back about 15 years ago, pardon me, I happened to get a cold just the other day, a long time, but anyway, try to bear with me. And by the way, this is an amplifying system, so I can hear your discussions better. Back about 15 years ago, we had Walmart that had been very interested in the Main Street property that my brother and I owned. We went through the whole discussions about bringing in a big-box store. They were nice people to deal with, believe me. I had a signed contract in my desk. Unfortunately, I couldn't disclose it at the time. What I'm leading up to is this. There was a vote taken, David, by the citizens of East Hampton, and they won...we won the election to rezone that property so that we could put a Walmart store in there. Then it went to court, and the judge overruled the fact that the people wanted it. But the people in East Hampton wanted a big-box store. And I think at this point, my strong recommendation is that there should be no limit to size. But if you want to limit the size of construction of big-box stores, let's leave it up to the citizens of East Hampton, not you hard-working members to make a decision that's going to affect the city for many, many years. We want business. I've got an empty store, 18,300 square feet, with adjoining six acres. I've got people that are coming in, but when you look at the size of the store, it's not available. It's not feasible for them. I may have to subdivide it. I don't know. The taxes are killing me. But what I'm leading up to is, don't make that decision for the citizens. Put it out for a vote, and let the citizens decide, David, whether we want what size store, but let the citizens decide. Let's not us tell them what we want. Who knows better? Do you know better?
All right. So I think that's another valid point that you should definitely bring to the public hearing when we have it with the ordinance subcommittee, okay?
Well, I'm talking to you folks.
I know. I know, but we're literally just deciding how to schedule a hearing with the ordinance subcommittee. So that's when we'll discuss the merits of it.
Something to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to thank you very much for listening to me.
Our pleasure. Thanks for your input. So Jim?
I would like to motion that we set up a date for a public hearing with the ordinance subcommittee to be scheduled before February 20th. Dates to be announced by Jessica.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
We got a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.